Yeah, I have that.
They told me about our meeting tonight.
Okay, what was one?
He said, "Get one thing this week so far."
I'm not going to sit down because when I sit down, I'll get red bag up.
That's true.
And I hate these chairs.
Well, the good news is I think we might have some new ones on the horizon.
That's a good to know.
That they're asking.
I've been working on that for about four years.
I think we should ask our town manager about that once we come in.
John has one.
Yeah.
Are you sure?
We have thirty-two. I know we have thirty-two.
We got many of them.
Perfect. Yeah, that's all.
Okay.
And then you can do C. Is that cool?
Well, good evening, everyone. I have 6:00 PM. I'd like to hold the Warsaw Town Council in session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all may be seated. Counselors, good to see everyone tonight. Mary Beth is away at a conference in Roanoke with her church, I believe, so we were not able to get the conference system up, but I hope she has a good time in Roanoke. And Ms. Rebecca will not be with us tonight either, so we, as always, hope she's having a nice dinner with her puppy. Okay, first order of business is we have approval of the consent agenda. That's in your packet there. I'll entertain any edits or a motion to approve.
One edit, Mr. Mayor. Page four, under Jonathan English, votes aye. I abstain from the vote for the regional jail budget.
Got it.
No worries. That's why we do this.
Ms. Julia, we have that note? All right. Counsel, I'll put it up for motion that we have approval of the consent agenda with one edit listing Jonathan as abstain. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, we have an agenda. First order of business is our public comment. I don't have anyone that has signed up that would like to speak, but is there anyone here that would like to speak? Okay, public comment section is over. As usual, I'm going to pass by the mayor's report and throw some comments in throughout as we go. So I'm going to turn this over to our town manager for his report. Mr. Questionberry?
Yep. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So I'll go ahead and get started. Item number one of my report to you all is the mural project. Again, just to reiterate, last month's, we town staff members have obtained rights to paint a mural on the side of Big City Chuck Wagon where the former daily was, adding a beautification element to the busiest intersection in the Northern Neck. The space at 137 feet long will be the largest mural project in the region, and we anticipate having the mural completed sometime next month. We're still working on getting renderings finalized to send to you all, so just be on the lookout for that. I'll be sending those out. Item number two, economic development update. We were pleased to hold two ribbon cuttings since our last meeting of council. The first was at Rise and Set Provisions, which was well-attended by members of council and the public. Thank you all that attended. This new addition will allow residents from Warsaw and surrounding communities to purchase healthier alternatives for daily grocery needs. We welcome them to town and wish them all the best. On Saturday, we held a ribbon cutting for Play and Fun Indoor Playground, a spacious facility located beside a tractor supply. The event had a large crowd with many children present. This community brings a large, safe indoor play area with interactive games and several pieces of active play equipment, as well as food and ice cream options. Please go check it out if you haven't done so.
What I love about these two new businesses is they make Warsaw a destination, right?
They do.
Both those businesses are unique. There, I don't know if there's any in the Northern Neck like them, and I think we're going to have business pulling from the other counties and throughout the region, so just real excited about both those.
Me too. Play and Fun, really, if you haven't been in there, please go. You feel like you're in Richmond or Fredericksburg. It's a really, really neat experience.
Is there an age limit on the equipment? Could council go and buy a ticket and go down a slide or two?
I'll ask. I certainly will. I know you have to take your shoes off.
I think I might get stuck in a tube, but I'll give it a shot.
Okay. I'll certainly ask. And then town staff are still working with the national gas station chain. They actually did a site visit last week for a parcel in town, and so we're hoping to work on that. And then we're still working on the hotel project. We have not heard back from Atlantic Union, so I'm, you know, starting to wonder if that's going to happen, so we're going to go ahead and start identifying maybe potential alternatives for a parcel. Those are those projects. Item number three, Woodland Heights. Town staff members continue to work with residents of Woodland Heights as we address any concerns they may have regarding the proposed eight homes to be built on the road, as well as the condition of the road itself. Woodland Heights Road was built with no HOA, homeowners association, or POA in place to fund repairs, nor at a large enough width to allow for it to be placed in VDOT system. And just to, for those that don't know, for a road to be put into the VDOT system, a town under 3,500 population, you get a quarter of a mile a year that could be brought into their system where they will maintain it. I did ask, they do not do gravel roads anymore, so it would be paved, sort of like out here at Belleville, not the best, but it would be paved.
That spray application thing?
Yeah, and the little gravel asphalt.
Yeah.
Or in gravel.
So they're down to only, they said in their system, about five miles of unpaved road in Richmond County in the VDOT system. And so each year, they sort of try to whittle that down. But we are working with them. We met with them. We do have 50 feet, except for the very front, and so that's where we're probably going to have to do eminent domain to get the rest. And they will work with us. Instead of 50 feet, they'll do 30 feet to try to be good neighbors and work with us. So we need approximately 14 more feet along that front parcel.
I know we're just getting started, but we really got to stay on that. That road needs to be in the system.
Yeah. Yeah, we agree. So some things that we've done, our Public Works Director's done a great job of getting the water line out of the road. Right now, it's right underneath it, so it'll be to the left of it. So we have that update, upgrade, and then we're working town staff to get it in the VDOT system. And in the interim, we have requested and required Mr. Packet to ensure maintenance. And I know he did go down, I think, last week and fixed some potholes that were there, and so he's going to be...
Yeah, saw him out there.
Yeah. So he was really great. I mean, he hopped right on it, and so we're going to keep an eye on it. I was just there yesterday with an engineer to work on getting it in the VDOT system. So it's something that's like a very high priority for us to get accomplished.
Bobby, what's the sentiment down there?
I really haven't heard any noise, you know? I think everybody's just, hopefully, just accepting it, you know, maybe not thrilled about it, but just, you know, time moves on and things change.
I know many, many years ago, they didn't want us to do anything. All they wanted us to do is give them two loads of gravel about every year, every other year. George Fiddle lived down at the end there. He was on council then, too. He had the equipment to spread it, and they would just, you know, take care of it themselves because they didn't want people coming down there that lived down there, and they thought if we did something to it, then it would open up to everybody.
Yeah.
But a lot of those people probably aren't around anymore because I'm talking about probably 1990s or, you know.
Now, you have new houses built there that require, you know, paved driveways. You want to have a tar road?
Yeah, I would think so.
Yeah. I know, so we did yesterday, we had town staff, thank you all for, we went to each house and dropped off a letter from our office stating, "Here's a project that's going on. Here's what you can look for. If you have any issues at all, please contact the town office." I have heard from one, so we know that there's an issue, so we're trying really hard to work on that, but so that's something...
Keep the outreach going. That's important.
Absolutely.
Joseph, I don't believe my neighbor received that letter because I, she's the first house, Bill Northern's old house?
Yeah.
And I asked her, she got home from work last night, and I said, "Did you get, you know, you should have a letter." I got mine delivered, hand-delivered by the town, and she didn't see it in the mailbox or on her front step or in the back, so.
Okay. Thank you for that. Yeah, we'll probably get that out tomorrow, get that out to them. Yeah, sorry about that. Thank you. Next line item, the Savvy Citizen and Interactive App, and we do have the QR codes on the postcards here at the front table, and we have the sign out front. So we're pleased to announce that the official launch of Savvy Citizen app, a 24/7 alert system with push notification abilities to alert citizens and visitors to important events, has been launched, whether there's a water line break that has occurred, a concert at the town park. I think if you subscribed, you got a notification about the council meeting. We have the ability to send notifications to registered accounts to alert the public, and the company right now is working to where, like the National Weather Service, it will, even if you sign up or not, if something is really urgently going on, it will just push out if you're within the town limits of Warsaw. So I think that's pretty neat. Right now, we have about 200 that have signed up already in like a week or two, so we're pretty happy about that. And we please ask that you go on our Facebook or on our website, it's on there as well, and sign up for that app. Item number five, upcoming events. Again, this Saturday from 9:00 to 2:00 at the town park is our community market. Then something big for us, something new, is the Northern Neck Arts Festival. That's this Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM at Belleville Farm at 15104 History Land Highway. And that is put on by the Arts Center of Montross, Northern Neck Arts Center of Montross, I think, or something like that. So please come on out. Two days, lots of vendors, I think about 30 artists, so please come out and support.
Food trucks, I think a winery is going to be present as well, so.
We have about 700 people on Facebook, so we hope it's a big crowd. And then the big one that we're always excited about, Fourth Fridays is back, and we, our first band is Soul Expressions, which pulls a really big crowd for us, and that is Friday, June 27th at 7:00 PM. And I will put this plug in, unlike other local communities, we do not charge for you to listen to them. So please come out and watch them and listen to them for free. Item number six, and Riley, if you don't mind, coming up to the podium here, we're pleased to announce that Ms. Riley Garrison has joined our administrative team as an accounting clerk. Ms. Garrison is a native of Westmoreland County and recently graduated from the University of Mary Washington about a few weeks ago. Is that right? With two degrees in economics and business administration, and I want to give her some time to speak and then welcome her to our team.
Thank you, Joseph. So as Joseph had mentioned, I'm from Westmoreland County, but more specifically, I'm from Colonial Beach, not the town, but the vicinity of Colonial Beach. Also, as Joseph had mentioned, I did just graduate from the University of Mary Washington last month, and I will be going back this fall to achieve my MBA, so that's exciting. During my few short weeks here with the town, I've been met with nothing but support and encouragement and everything from everybody that I've worked with, whether it's been Julia, Joseph, Missy, anybody. Everybody's been great, as well as the town members and council members. Everyone has been pleasant to work with and talk to, which is very encouraging, starting a new role at a new job, new place. It's been very supportive, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, which does make me excited for the future. I've noticed during my time here with, working with the town, this is a very tight-knit community where everybody supports each other, they encourage each other, and everybody just wants everyone to be great, which gives me good hope for being here. So I appreciate y'all's time, and thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. And in her first couple weeks, she already got a thank you card for exceptional customer service, which has doubled the amount I've gotten, so that's great. So good job, and thank you. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Welcome to the team. On that good note, that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you. Any questions for our town manager? All right, let's move down to our police report. Officer, stand up, state your name. Tell us why the chief isn't here.
Well, the chief isn't here because he had some much-needed things he needed to do outside, and he was given permission to...
Oh, he wanted to go to bed early.
Something like that. I am Lieutenant Raden. I'm the second-in-command of the police department. I'm very happy to be here tonight. I will start by saying that the report is included in your packet. We were awarded a no-match grant for officer health and wellness, allowing us to purchase ergonomic chairs, desk risers, and other equipment for officer health and wellness. The chief is working on a cop's grant to fund another officer for a three-year term. We're very excited about the opportunity to apply for this grant. We were proud to escort Richmond County's tennis, softball, and baseball teams out of town over the last two days, and we were proud to be part of their success. Our team is doing great work. The interaction with the community is fantastic, and our partnership with the sheriff's office continues to improve every day. Pending any questions, that is your report. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and be part of this wonderful community.
I've wondered about that grant for three years, because we had it once, more than once before. One of the stipulations was at the end of the three years that that person would become full-time in the squad, and we'd be paying for everything at that time. Is that part of that grant?
I don't want to speak out of turn, and I'm not too familiar with it. The chief is just starting to work on it, so I will leave that in his hands to answer the next meeting or next time he sees you.
Because, I mean, we can't look three years ahead and see if we can afford to add another one on.
I will definitely let him know that that's a concern.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
So we were, Molly and myself and Mikael, we were walking the dogs through Hamilton. I forgot what day, whatever day the color run, fun run was, and it looked to be a big turnout. That was really, really cool. And our good officers were there to help out, and when it was all said and done, I saw our officer team going down through Hamilton, taking the cones down and making sure everything was put back the way it ought to be, so very, very happy to see that. That's community policing at its best. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Director of Public Works report. Can't remember your name, so you might want to say that.
Mr. School? I'll start with the treatment plant. Monthly numbers, average daily influent flow for May was 191,600, an increase of 1,400 gallons from April. Maximum influent for May was 278,400, a decrease of 66,300 from April. For May, the average effluent total nitrogen, this is a revision from your number in your packet. The provision is a 2.42 milligrams per liter, still within our limits, just was a small error. For May, the average effluent total phosphorus was 0.14 milligrams per liter. Staff completed and submitted our monthly operations report. Staff collected all six groundwater monitoring wells for our second quarter of '25. Plant staff hosted two tours with the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School students last month. That went really well.
Nice.
Lastly, treatment plant effluent samples for the month of May met all requirements to our permit. Moving on to the water department, you will find a water loss report in your packet. Again, that is at a 3% water loss. We did a lot of sampling this month with our water, so I'll just run through those real quick. We did take nitrite samples at our well number one, two, and four. We took cyanide samples at well one and two. And lastly, we took VOC samples at well number four. All samples came back in compliance with, so that was good. All sewage pump stations were cleaned and greased, and then staff began our yearly maintenance on all town-owned generators. Refuge department, for the month of April, we made 17 trips to the landfill, totaling 133 tons. Public Works Maintenance, staff assisted with Monday and Thursday residential trash, took care of the bathrooms and the grounds at the park, steady cutting grass all over, keeping everything cut. If you didn't notice, we did repay all these bushes out front, replaced it with new, and along with some river rock, to hopefully maintain it a little better. And what's not on here, we did rent a concrete sidewalk grinder, so tomorrow we should finish up Main Street, so just be aware, keep a lookout.
I'm glad to hear that. I know at least one citizen will be very happy to know that.
So, that's all I got.
Counsel, do we have any questions for Jesse? Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Committee reports. Did any other committee meet? I don't believe so. All right.
Economic Development Committee.
I'm sorry?
The Economic Development Committee.
Okay.
We're going to discuss it on new business, right?
Yes, it is.
All right, we'll take that down there.
Yes.
Okay. Planning Commission report, did we meet?
No, sir.
Okay. Northern Neck Regional Jail report, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, you got a breakdown of the population as of yesterday in the packet there. The meeting itself was, wasn't a real long thing. It wasn't a whole lot in it. One of the things we did, there were about five or six things that were passed by the state government that needed to be changed in our handbooks and stuff, so we had to make those changes, provisions and that. And I went through all those and voted on those. And then the second thing was, which is very good, is we received this very, very nice plaque from the Marshal's Service for 30 years of working with them. And they showed up, asked Michelle if they could come, and, you know, you never know what they're up to when they come there, but they came with the plaque and some pizzas and things like that, took a tour of the jail, and everything was well, which is good, because you like having a good relationship with them.
Oh, yes. Nothing wrong with plaques and pizzas.
That's right.
Any questions for our Vice Mayor? Okay. All right, moving down to old business. Project update, 74 Main Street.
Yes, I'll speak to that. We've had a few hiccups with Dominion. We need a pole set for the electrical upgrades, and it seems that a neighboring property owner did not want to give an easement for where Dominion had designed the pole, the upgrade to go. So we've had to redesign the plan, so they're in the process of that. I've been in contact with the designer with Dominion and also with Mr. Cassone. So they're working together. I feel like in the next week, we'll have something signed and be able to move forward.
All right, just, so I understand it, so council's up to speed as well. So we've, over the past few weeks, we've had some movement with some painting. We've had some equipment, HVAC equipment delivered, and really, we are, the ceiling's been painted. We're stuck till we get the electricity piece solved.
Yeah, I do believe there has been some other small things done in the building, but until we get that electrical upgrade, we can't install the panel box and get all the other equipment installed.
Missy, please stay right on top of that.
Yep.
Thank you.
No problem.
Counsel, any questions?
Is the equipment installation holding up the process of working on the front part of the building?
Yes, it is. The Dominion, the electrical upgrade has to be done for more progress to be made. So we're kind of at a standstill with some of the major work. I mean, there's little things that can be done, but nothing substantial. So, yeah, we're, I've escalated it. I mean, I've contacted Dominion and tried to, I don't know, expedite the process, but unfortunately, having to redesign where the pole goes, that's not just something that happens overnight, so.
All right. All right. Well, replacement, where are we at with that?
Yes, so I've made an account with the USDA system. It's a little more cumbersome now than it used to be. Actually, I'm going to get Mrs. Garrison to help me with that. I think we're going to work on that project together. But I've logged in and made an account there, so right now, we're going through USDA and Virginia Department of Health for funding Office of Drinking Water. So we're still trying to, we've gotten the quote that was a lot lower, thanks to, you know, great staff members here, and so we're trying to wrap up this funding portion.
Okay. Any questions? The HCD housing project.
Did you want me to speak to that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we're still in the process of the rehab, the rehab of three homes. I think one has been completed, two are currently being worked on, and the others that are complete rebuilds, we're just waiting on the modulars to be available. So once the modulars are in, modular homes, the demo can begin, so it's probably like a couple months out before we'll see some movement on the complete rebuilds.
We have one complete, one completed?
Two, yes, we have one rehab completed, and then we have one that's in the works, and I think another that's, I think it's been started. It's one right here in Belleville, so.
All right.
Yeah, everything's moving right along with that, so everybody seems to be pretty happy.
Any idea how the county's portion is going?
I think they're having some land issues, signatures and different things. I think it's progressing, but I think it's going to be a lot slower than...
So they have not evolved to actually boots on the ground yet, right?
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the housing project? All right. Moving right along, budget adoption. Counsel, we've been working on this for probably three months or so. We've had at least one work session. We've had a public hearing, and we've had a couple, more than a couple conversations about it. And so we have our finished product that we're ready to approve for the next year. Ms. Questionberry, is there anything you'd like to add? Has there been any changes?
Yeah, the version you have in front of you is the one that we'll be using as our operating budget for the whole year.
All right. Counsel, is there any final questions on the budget or any comment you would like to bring up?
I would just again like to thank the staff and everyone for working on this and your due diligence and putting it together, and it's like everything, every year, things are going up, but you all are certainly working within a reasonable limit and a reasonable budget to still keep this town going, and I just appreciate all the work you guys did on this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Ralph, I did ask for a raise for council members, but we just don't have it in the budget.
Well, it's not in the budget yet. We just got to keep working every year and try to get it.
So I like to bring this up. Every year, we do this, right? It is, it is within the town charter that council can be paid, but ever since the town was founded, council has refused to be paid, and that's a rarity, and so you all should be very much commended for that.
It has come up a couple times. We've had a couple people do it, try, but...
Well, you know...
It only lasted one term. Nope, I can't believe anybody's in this for money.
Bobby wants to bring it back up. All right, folks. We have the budget. There doesn't seem to be any more discussion. Do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion. We approve the budget for fiscal year 2026.
All right. I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? We work much quicker and better than Washington. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you, Counsel, very much. Thank you.
We got us a big, beautiful bill, too.
All right, Ralph gets it for the night. He gets the applause. All right, new business. Warsaw Development Management Ordinance Work Order Proposal in Discussion.
Yes, so this is just the very beginning discussion regarding this. So I think we've done a really good job with, and, you know, during my tenure, working with great staff and great council, we've now got a brand-new, the newest website in the region online. We have our town code completely online. We have a brand-new comprehensive plan that lasts us until 2040. The only thing that's still floating out there is our zoning slash development management ordinance. It is a cumbersome document of 200, 300 pages, and it sort of outlines everything that we really have teeth in it. You know, if you call about your neighbor's yard, we reference that. Fences on your property, we reference that. It's sort of a very important living document for us, and it's cumbersome, and I think it's a little dated. And what we're concerned with is adding hundreds of homes and trying to use a slightly archaic document to try to enforce things, and I'm afraid at some point, it's going to open us up to potential liability. And so the Berkeley Group, I thought, did a really good job with the comprehensive plan, really good product. And so I reached out to them to just completely overhaul our zoning ordinance. And really, probably since about 2003, there hasn't been a substantive edit that included any state code. So anything that was adopted at the state that has changed or is new does not reflect in this ordinance. And so I know as of July 1 this year, it allows for residential can now be placed in commercial zones. I mean, that is just state requirement, and that's something we'll have to add in here. So I had them go over it. We met with them. It is a big document, and so I know the county redid their comprehensive plan. That was $100,000. We did our comprehensive plan. They gave us a pretty good deal. Ours is $50,000 because we're smaller and they duplicated some of the work. For this, they did a quote of, without travel and printing and all that, of $110,735, and then total, $115,164. So with that in mind, that's a really big figure, and so we've been working on, we have two things that will, in effect, pay for it, that are not realized revenues at this time. Number one is the SLAF grant, if y'all remember from the bounds. We still have that $100,000 floating in there. We're about to have that deposited into our account, so we'll have about $100,000 coming in from that grant. And then we'll talk a little bit more in closed session, but we have a settlement from a thing we've been working on with Chesapeake Donuts of about $20,000. So we have $120,000 coming in, so the monies we have in reserves will not really be touched. It will be paid for, if y'all approve, through that. I did sort of talk about this with the mayor, and he requested that I issue a request for proposals so other companies can go ahead and, if they want, to put in a proposal for the... so other companies can go ahead and, if they want, to put in a proposal for this project, which I'm going to work on next week. But I wanted to just put this on your radar. I think we're just nervous because we are the regulatory authorities, and some of the lines for things like go here, go down, go here, and they just don't match up. And it's going to lead us to, I think, potential liabilities in the future.
There's a lot of items that aren't addressed in our current zoning.
New things.
New things, new things that, you know, with, with time and growth have come about, and we just don't address them. So it just leaves us...
I think it makes really good sense to have the document revised, published digitally, all that kind of stuff. I think that's a wonderful, smart idea. $115,000, $120,000 to me sounds obscene. Maybe that's what it should be, but it sounds really high to me. So, council, I did ask, as Joseph mentioned, to put an RFP and see if that, in fact, is what we should be paying. If we, excuse me, if we get two or three bids back and that's what we should be paying, then that's what we should be paying. But if we're going to spend $100,000, I'd like for someone else to look at that.
Sure.
Council, does that sound all right with you? That might slow things up just a bit.
Would the fees be spread out across this timeline, Joseph, through May of '27? Or is it up front, is it on the back end?
Yeah.
What's that look like?
That's a good question. So it would be split over two fiscal years. So, you know, you're looking at less than 60, you know, for, for each fiscal year. And it would be a two-year process because it's such a big document. Yeah.
All right. Well, throw your net out, see what you find.
Okay, yeah.
Come back with the best price for the best quality.
Sure, will do. Thank you.
All right, Business Improvement Grant Application, our Rise and Set Provisions. Jonathan, do you want to?
Sure.
Jonathan?
Both of us?
Whoever.
Yeah, we can both chime in.
As a chair, I believe, yeah, we had an application for a Business Improvement Grant from Rise and Set Provisions for new signage and side upgrade. I believe the owner spent $3,593.52. Missy, what's she asking for?
It's about $1,797.
To the half, right?
Yes.
And the committee, we had three ayes and one abstain.
Okay.
That's the committee's recommendation, is to pass.
So we have a recommendation to grant the grant.
Grant the grant. And, and I think mentioned in there is, we did have enough, you know, left in the, for this fiscal year.
Yes, we have $3,200 left in that item, so.
Council, any questions for Jonathan or Missy? All right. Is there a motion to approve the grant for the Rise and Set Provisions?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion. We have a second? Second? All those in favor, aye? Those opposed? All right. Saddlery Foundation Community and Veterans Memorial Dedication.
Yes, we, the Saddlery Foundation will be hosting a memorial dedication. They have, okay, perfect. Yes, so every, everyone from the town, Planning Commission included, is invited, residents, of course, are, are invited to participate in the dedication on Thursday, June 26th at 5:30 p.m. at the Saddlery. Many of you may have noticed that the monument was placed, it was donated by an individual, and that person will be recognized and other, other members will be recognized as well. I think the Planning Commission and Town Council is also on the agenda to be recognized. So I'm, from Ms. Pat Pugh, she wanted to make sure I extended the invitation to everyone. And of course, the memorial bricks can be purchased for community servants and veterans alike.
All right. Any questions for Missy? All right, progress. All right, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think we have need to go into closed session.
So we're going to close session under statute 2.2-3711A7, dealing with legal matters concerning Chesapeake Donuts.
Council, we have a motion for our Vice Mayor. We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Ladies, we'll be as quick as we can.